Mr. Gilbert?
Here.
Mr. Tiesel? Mr. Detzl?
Here.
Mr. Heether?
Here.
Ms. Taubey?
Here.
One of the things that I wanted to start doing that we learned in Capitol Conference, which I thought was a great idea, was that at the beginning of each meeting, we read our mission statement for the school district. And our mission statement is, "The Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success." Okay. First presentation, Darrell?
Yep. So, at our last meeting, it was requested that we do an update to our COVID numbers. So, I wanted to go ahead and share that update that was requested. So, when we started this school year, we started with a response plan in place. It was monitoring five local data points and the CDC rating of community spread. And the plan put in place multiple interventions based on the number of indicators that were above the benchmark. When the plan was implemented in August, by the time we hit September, we were above three indicators and already had a mask mandate for the entire district. That continued through November. At the end of October, right toward the beginning of November, our indicators trended back down. We moved to two indicators and the mask mandate was removed. That corresponded with the end of October, when the Ohio Department of Health issued new guidance to schools, and it was their mask to stay and test to play. Those were two things that came out that kept kids in school. So, mask to stay meant that students who are exposed to COVID can remain in school if they are masked during their quarantine period. This only applies to school-based exposures. Any exposures for students outside of the school setting, at home, at church, any other places, would still require the home quarantine period. They would still not be able to return to school during that 14-day period. The test-to-play guidance basically took the mask to stay and applied it to extracurricular activities. So, students who were exposed during school could continue to participate in extracurriculars as well as attend school if they wore a mask when they were able during the activity, and they tested upon their initial notification of exposure and received a negative test. Those two guidances from the Ohio Department of Health are still in effect today. November, when we hit the below-benchmark and the rules changed from the Department of Health, the board removed the COVID response plan, and we went back to mask optional but recommended due to the low number of indicators in the plan and the rollout of mask to stay and test to play. As we went through November and December and into January, this is what our numbers have looked like. So, our current numbers for staff-positive cases were in December, you can see, there were seven positive cases for the week of December 6th, then 12. When we got into January, we started to see that uptick with 59, 58, and then the week that ended today, 30 staff-positive cases. Our student positives, you can see, in December averaging between 20 and 40, and then in January, they went up to 207, and then trended to 180, and this week, 104 student-positive cases. When we review the community data, this is just bringing back the data that we tracked when we started the school year. We tracked the county data. The county data represents the seven-day average of new positive cases in the entire county. When we rolled out our plan, 255 was a high number for us. In December, it was 338, and it's climbed to over 2,000, and as of today, it is 1,200 new positive cases per day on a seven-day average. The other columns are zip codes. Those are the zip codes associated with school buildings in our district. And you can see that the numbers there are the same metric. It is the number of new positive cases on a seven-day average for those zip codes, and they've climbed anywhere from 10 to 20, up to, the recent week has been between 34 and 63. So, those are the metrics that we tracked at the beginning of the school year, just to give you context of data that we tracked then and what it would look like now. When we look at our cumulative numbers for staff and students, this is taken directly off of our website. We post every Monday at about 3:30 or 4:00 our weekly COVID numbers on our tracker, and we list that by school, but this is for aggregate data for the district. So, this tracks by month the number of positive cases for staff and students. You can see, August through December, we had a total of 95 positive cases for our staff for that first semester, 467 positive cases for the first half of the year with our students. And for January, we're at 196 for the month of January and 519 for the month of January for students, just to show you kind of the trend for the school year based on what we publicly put out to our parents and our community. In Hamilton County, this is the trend line for their daily cases, so it shows the different spikes that we've been in, and you can see on the very far right, that is currently the data for December and January, just to kind of show you the trend for the last year and a half. In December, and this was shared with all of you, Governor DeWine emailed all superintendents in the state of Ohio, and part of his email was talking about the focus on in-person learning and to keep students in school. He reiterated that health experts were recommending that schools continue masking for students as they return. This was in December, so it was referring to the return from winter break. In that email, he also shared a letter. The letter was from the Ohio Hospital Association and the Ohio Children's Hospital Association, and in the letter, they also indicated urging schools to continue requiring masks when they return from winter break. Some additional changes that happened from the Ohio Department of Health, they changed, again, some of their rules and regulations. So, in mid-January, the Department of Health changed their isolation period for positive cases. So, now, a positive COVID case will result in five days of isolation at home, and then an additional five days of masking. Those additional five days where masks are required do require the person to have greatly improved symptoms and to have no fever for 24 hours. So, if at the end of that five-day of home isolation, a staff or student have improved symptoms, and they do not have a fever, and that includes using fever-reducing medication, then they can return for their additional five days of isolation with a mask. In terms of close contacts, these are individuals that are identified as a close contact to a positive case. If, and it's kind of an if, if, if scenario, if you are a close contact, if you are unvaccinated, and if it happens outside of school, then you must quarantine at home for five days, but you can return on day six for your additional five days of quarantine with a mask. If you are a close contact and you're unvaccinated, and it happens within the school setting, then they may continue to report to school each day of their quarantine period, provided they wear a mask and monitor for symptoms, and if symptoms develop, stay home. If someone is a close contact and they are vaccinated, and this is inside or outside of school, they can continue to report to school or work, provided that they wear a mask for their quarantine period. So, a lot of guidance and a lot of rules that have changed, but this is the rules that we currently live under from the Ohio Department of Health. The last thing that changed was the definition of what fully vaccinated is. In order to be fully vaccinated, individuals have to have attained a booster dose if their second shot was within six months for Pfizer-Maderna, if they are within two months of a Johnson and Johnson. So, they've changed the definition of fully vaccinated to being fully vaccinated is if you are within six months of your previous shot, if you are Pfizer-Maderna, whether that's your two-dose regimen or your booster, or if you are within two months of your Johnson and Johnson shot. So, this changes the rules. When you think about these different rules around who's unvaccinated, who's vaccinated, and what rules they follow, that change in definition for fully vaccinated then obviously changes the rules for people based on the situation they find themselves in, whether it is a positive case, a close contact, and whether it happened within the school or outside of the school. So, a lot of changes that have happened from the beginning of the year in terms of our response as a district, but also in terms of how the Ohio Department of Health has been managing all of this as well. So, just want to give you an update on where we were at this point in terms of the numbers and in terms of all of the changing guidance. This is, can be extremely confusing, and I give a lot of credit to Kiva, our district nurse, and her entire nursing staff, who are the front lines of making sure that we are in compliance with the Ohio Department of Health guidelines, and we really appreciate all of their continued work and diligence in this.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
So, I know the 100 students is 1% of our student population. What is the staff population total, that 38 or 30 number?
The 30?
For this week, the number that you have?
We have, on average, around 1,250 staff members.
Thank you, Darrell.
Sure.
Mark, do you want me to just address one more thing about the policy?
Sure.
The last meeting, we adopted the, and updated our guidance for masks, and our policy was a two-week universal mask mandate that expires today. So, without further board action, tomorrow, we would, the district would reopen as mask optional but recommended, just like we were prior, previously. So, just, and FYI, where we are in terms of the masks.
Great, thank you. Legislative update?
Mark, nothing.
Nothing? Student Achievement Liaison Report?
Yes, I do have quite a few things here. Tonight, Abby McNally at Corrine High School is going for the all-time school record, 15 points away from breaking that record, and they're at Seton playing tonight at 7:30. For Corrine High School Boys Soccer, first team All GMC is Alex McAfee, Will Shuddy, and Eli Wilt. Second team All GMC is Davion Hutchinson. Alex McAfee was Player of the Year in the GMC, which is a huge accomplishment. He was also All City and All State, and All City is Will Shuddy. For Corrine Girls Soccer, first team All GMC, Josie Meinke and Ava Scherz. Second team All GMC is Kalani Braddock, and All City, Josie Meinke. And then for Girls Volleyball, first team All GMC, Abby McNally and Kylie McNally, and second team All GMC, Rosie Beck. Kylie was also selected to District 1613, and Kylie will represent Corrine in the senior showcase, and Abby was selected to be in the District 16 All-Star match. For Corrine High School Football, Levert Jarman and MJ Flowers, our second team All Southwest Ohio District. And All GMC first team is Tayshon Banks, Jameer Carpenter, MJ Flowers, Levert Jarman, and Temeskin Kasey. And All GMC second team is Zaire Anderson, AJ Foster, Ed Lockwood, and Cam Robinson. And at Northwest High School, we have first team All SWOC for football, Kamari Frye, Darian Montgomery, Nick Moore, and Davion Perkins. And then honorable mention is Nate Love, and Kamari Frye and Darian Montgomery were also Cincinnati Enquirer Second Team All-Stars. Nick Moore was selected first team All Southwest District, first team All City, first team All Ohio, and was selected to play in the Ohio North-South game in the spring. And then also wonderful accomplishments with our PTA reflection winners. Literature at Corrine High School is Leila Klotz, she was a winner there. For Visual Arts at Northwest High School, we have Landon Hill and Dawa Gali. Literature at Pleasant Run Elementary, Nebaya Pleasant and Taryn McKinley. And Visual Arts at Corrine Elementary is Brendan Nelson and Macy Trotter. Literature at White Oak Middle, Simon Garing. And Music Comp at White Oak is Brianna Hert. Photography at Pleasant Run Elementary, Carson Assanti and Autumn Pruitt. And then at Corrine Elementary for Visual Arts, we have Hazel Birding, Elijah Osage, and Jonathan Lawson. So, great accomplishments all across the district, and congratulations to all of those students.
Thank you, DePaul. Jim, you're up.
Yeah, I'd like to have Chris Trentman come up. He's our Butler Tech supervisor for our kids in our classes at Northwest High School and Corrine High School.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Once again, I'm Chris Trentman. I know with some new board members here, it's been a while since I've been up here because of that wonderful COVID thing that we've been talked about earlier. Just want to give a few updates, and then I like to highlight some of our programs. So, a couple of things that are going on right now, we are doing our recruiting season. Applications for our two-year programs are due January 31st, so we're wrapping that up. And the great thing that most of our teachers and students are really excited about is CTSO competitions are going to run fully this year, meaning they're back in person and those types of things. So, we have BPA and DECA Regionals is next week, state and nationals are later on in the spring, so our kids usually do very well, so we're excited about getting ready for that competition season. Before our next, before I introduce Mr. Kelly and Trevor, there's a video that I'd like to play, if we could. This video was done, just a little heads up, this was, video was done by our digital media program at Northwest, is produced and edited by the students, and it's a little thing about Trevor, so go ahead and let me play that.
First thing to do is fall in love with your work. When I was younger, I watched my grandpa on construction, wanted to be just like him when I grew up. Growing up, I watched my grandpa do carpentry around the house, and that's why I looked up to him. Starting out at the age of 13, my aunt slightly loved working with my hand on projects, knew this is what I wanted to do. I knew that me learning on my own would only take me so far. I needed a place to learn more about construction and get more opportunities. Then I heard about the Butler Tech program at Northwest, and I was looking forward to all the opportunities that would come my way. Although I'm not in the grade needed to be in this class, Mr. Kelly allowed me to join the class and work on something that opened my eyes to a new type of construction. Since I was an only child, it was a cultural shift coming into structure and seeing all the other like-minded people with a passion for construction. It allowed me to build great, long-lasting friendships that would last a lifetime. Not only was I able to go to Butler Tech and build relationships, but freelancing on my own and meeting new people will always be an awesome experience that I will never get tired of. After finishing up the Butler Tech program here in four years, I plan on going straight into the workforce and putting my skills to use at a company. In the end, I want to build sort of my own construction company, and one day passing on to my kids and teach them everything my grandpa taught me. To be successful, the first thing to do is fall in love with your work.
Your work?
So, I'm at the side, I'd like to introduce Mr. Kelly and Trevor.
Hello, my name is Trevor. I'm a student of Mr. Kelly. It's my third year, first year technically, but third year being in there in total. I've done a lot, including in the video, started out at the age of 13. Thing I love about the class is being hands-on, but another thing this year is being a role model for all the students.
Yeah, Trevor's been with me for three years now, and I'm extremely proud of him. I'm gonna say hi to you guys, too, Trevor. Turn around real quick so they can... Anyway, as a freshman, Trevor might be hiding back in the corner of the room, you know, and especially his first year. But just to see the confidence that he is gaining in so many other students just like him, and just getting them ready to opt into the workplace or for whatever's next. And when Trevor was talking about being a leader, we actually took him into the program early because we identified, through the help of Trevor, just showing the passion that he had for it, the desire to be in there. So, we made some special accommodations, and I'm gonna have Trevor actually for four years. So, what's really cool, though, is that Trevor is almost a teacher's assistant now in the class he's in with me. And man, do you ever learn it really well when you, when you can teach it? So, and the other students identify him as that, and the other neat thing is he's turned into such a leader, and I'm so proud of him, I'm so proud of him, everybody, that now kids are coming to him, and he's helping them with their history work. We have a little breakout time over on the side, and they identify Trevor as a leader, and, and, and he's over not even just helping with solving construction issues, but even a little history homework, so. Thank you, thank you very much, members of the board, and all our folks, and thank you for all your support and the community. And hey, Trevor.
Thank you very much. These two both, and some of their other students, do a lot of work around Northwest High School as well, just to help, you know, doing some of those small project works and doing all those types of things. They're always willing to help out for all of our different programs, and, you know, it's just a kudos to the relationships that Donnie has built to really build these students up, so I do appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Trevor, congratulations. Thank you for doing the video. And if you weren't passionate coming in, being around Donnie, doesn't take long to become passionate. Donnie is, I've known Donnie for a long time, and he loves these kids and is willing to do anything for them, and that's priceless. Thank you, Donnie.
Good job, guys.
Yep.
Darrell, do we have any reports from any employee organizations?
None tonight.
Okay. Okay, that brings us to community comments. Let's get to read our page here. Northwest Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to listen to Northwest Local School District residents' comments, suggestions, and concerns on educational issues. It is important to remember that the board conducts the meetings in public, but the meetings are not a public forum. The intent of the meeting is to allow the board to complete needed business. Northwest Board of Education meetings are conducted using Robert's Rules of Order. Most matters which fall under the jurisdiction of the board may be addressed during the Community Comments section in the Order of Business. The board will not discuss negotiations or personnel in an open session. Any concerns or comments about individuals ought to be brought to the attention of the district administration. The school district cannot discuss personal student information, whether or not a discipline was imposed on a student, nor the reason for that decision, because disclosure would be a violation of state and federal law. And here are some guidelines when using public commentary at board meetings. Individuals wishing to address the board must complete and submit a request to speak form. Individuals will preface their comments by an announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if applicable. Each student will be, each person will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items of any topic during the Community Comments section. Public commentary is confined to that portion of the agenda. Individuals will be recognized to speak once on a given topic. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer. No person may individually address or question board members, district administration, or members of the public in attendance. No response to the speaker will occur from board members, district administration, or members of the public in attendance during this time. Appropriate follow-up with district administration may occur if warranted. No more than 15 minutes total devoted to public participation. Repetitive statements may be ruled out of order by the presiding officer, and the presiding officer has the right to terminate the participation of any individual or individuals if the person violates Rules of Good Order. We have two submissions. The first one is Jen Barrett.
Hello, I'm Jen Barrett. I have three children in the district, and based on your reversal of the mask mandate, I will be yielding my time. I would like you to consider to continue to do what parents want. You've seen what parents want, we've talked about it. You've seen what students want based on their lack of wearing masks when it was optional, and I want to tell you, thank you, Nicole, for standing up for our rights as parents as well. Thank you, I yield my time.
Thank you. The next submission is Jeanette Cooper, Suri Vasta?
That was really good.
I was practicing.
Yeah. Okay, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to ask questions. I have eight questions on the issue of gender identity in the Northwest Local School District. This topic is currently being discussed at the Ohio House of Representatives. I'm here on behalf of parents in this district who have requested my aid because they wish to remain anonymous. I am here on behalf of Partners Breathful Care, a nonprofit, and Cardinal Support Network, and my colleague Maria is also here, on behalf of Cardinal Support Network, which is a support network for parents of transgender-identified children. My eight questions. As of this meeting, has the Board of Education or superintendent received any information regarding the Save Adolescents from Experimentation Act, House Bill 454, currently in committee? Two, as of this meeting, is the board or superintendent aware of this bill, if enacted into law, would require that no school personnel withhold from a minor's parent or legal guardian or encourage or coerce a minor to withhold from the minor's parent or legal guardian the fact that the minor's perception of his or her gender is inconsistent with his or her sex? Number three, as of this meeting, are current school board policies in compliance with the requirements of the bill, and I'll give copies to you. Number four, do you have a copy of the book Irreversible Damage by Abigail Schreier in any school library in the district? My organization is providing three for your use. Number five, do you have any students within the district who identify as transgender and/or non-binary? Number six, is there, is that identification recorded in each student's permanent record and/or mental health record if a licensed mental health care provider is employed by or contracted with the district and has received such information? Number seven, do you have a district policy that requires school personnel to inform the parents or guardians when a student expresses to a school staff member that he or she identifies as transgender or non-binary? Number eight, do you keep a record of communication between the school personnel and parents and guardians regarding a student's identification with a gender that does not reflect his or her sex? I understand that the answers will be provided by the next school board meeting. All questions can be answered by yes or no without disclosing personally identifiable information as required by FERPA. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your service to the benefit of children and parents.
Thank you. Should we have her submit if she has the questions that we can?
They do. Yeah, I have a copy, so you can put them into the record.
Awesome.
And then, these are materials that we're leaving with you, including a copy of the House bill that is currently in committee, the Cardinal Support Network information.
It's in the committee in the House or the Senate?
In the House, in Families, Aging, and Human Services. So, these are materials that my organization wants to make.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
That brings us to 6.1, the adoption of superintendent's consent items. Darrell?
Yep. So, tonight for personnel, we have one retirement, four resignations, four initial appointments, and then we do have a revision to a job description for our head mechanic. And as we try to recruit into our Transportation Department for mechanics, we have two different jobs. We have a mechanic and a head mechanic. The head mechanic job description has been revised to really focus on some of the safety compliance and training components that would be necessary for the safe running of the garage. We also have a revision, the two resolutions that have already been passed. These are the resolutions for the hiring bonuses for transportation and classified staff These are the resolutions for the hiring bonuses for transportation and classified staff throughout the district. Because we are seeing so many resumes come in and applications, we wanted to make sure that we could continue to award this hiring bonus for any staff who are hired this year. So it basically just extends it to February twenty-fourth so that people who are being hired now through the end of February would be eligible for the hiring bonus as well. Typically, after February twenty-fourth, any positions that we would hire would be long-term subs. So this gets us to get as many people hired as we can to finish the year. For business, we have some vendor contracts. We have an accompanist that is on there, a DJ for prom, variety of Title I services, and then a contract for renting out Corrine High School facilities to Total Football Academy. We have donations from Side by Side to PRMS and Duke Energy to PRMS. And we have several teachers who have used our crowdfunding policy that allows teachers to use Donors Choose. And we have several Donors Choose items on there for Ms. Fox and Ms. Spray at P R E and Ms. Enderly at White Oak. We also have two out-of-state field trips through, from curriculum for the Butler Tech Engineering to attend competitions, one in Pennsylvania and one in Alabama. And we have a revision to our twenty-two, twenty-three calendar. It is changing a professional development day for staff. It does not impact the beginning of school, the end of school, or any of the student days. With that, the superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the adoption of consent items as listed.
Some of the second.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Questions for Darryl? That passes four to zero. That brings us to the adoption of fiscal consent items. Amy?
Good evening. First, we need to dispense with reading of and approve the organizational, the tax budget, and the regular meeting minutes from the January tenth meeting. We also have our financial report for the month of November, which our all-funds balance is sixty million, and our general fund unreserved balance is at twenty-eight million. Our year-to-date revenues are at forty-four million, or at forty-four percent. And our year-to-date expenditures are at thirty-seven point seven million, or at thirty-eight percent. Our average weight investment, average weighted return is at point five percent. And our list of monthly bills are our routine monthly bills, as well as we had our bond principal and interest payments. We have student, staff, and financial software. We have, we had the bottle filler installation, some custodial supplies, chiller repair, a class donation, bus cameras, an equipment rental, gym floor refurbishing, security payments, our week cross payment, and some auxiliary and grant fund payments. And then we need to accept, approve, and appropriate a fund for our food service who administer the P EBT cards. They were granted fifty-eight hundred dollars. And then finally, we need to accept the amended certificate of two-hundred-and-seven million dollars as approved by the Hamilton County Budget Commission per our appropriation resolution that was approved in December. So with that, I'd like to ask the board to approve the fiscal consent items as listed.
Some of them.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Are there any discussions or questions for Amy? That passes four to zero. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, Darryl, your update?
Sure. Just two things. One, we'll work to make sure that we put communication out informing everyone that the district will be mask optional but recommended starting tomorrow. And then wanted to just highlight some special education data. There's something that the Ohio Department of Education puts out called a special education profile. When you think about report cards for student achievement, people are familiar with that. This is pretty much a report card for special education services in the district. The Ohio Department of Education tries to measure multiple indicators, and they describe it as trying to just answer these questions. Are young children with disabilities entering kindergarten ready to learn? Are children with disabilities achieving at high levels? Are youth with disabilities prepared for life, work, and post-secondary education? Does the district implement IDEA to improve services and results for children with disabilities? And are children receiving equitable services and supports? Under those questions, there's a lot of data that is monitored around compliance for meeting, testing timelines for initial evaluations for students who might be suspected with a disability, monitoring compliance of assessments for students with disabilities, making sure that post-secondary plans and students' IEPs are timely and done in a compliant way. We have met every indicator that is measured on this report. And that is a huge task and a huge accomplishment for our entire special education department district-wide, from the teachers who are writing the IEPs, our related service staff, our school psychs, our speech, our OTs and PTs who are contributing to the evaluations, who are providing services to students on a daily basis, our administrators who attend IEP meetings and make sure that we are compliant with not only our timelines, but the intent of the law. So I just wanted to take a moment and just a huge shout-out to our special education team district-wide because being able to meet all of those indicators is a true team effort, and we truly appreciate the investment, the time, and the detail that goes into making this happen. And when this happens, outcomes are improved for kids, and we so appreciate the work that our staff have done.
Great, congratulations. Any questions or discussions with Darryl? When we were, I think the first time I really heard about the informatics of the documentation, the IEPs, I think we were in the contract negotiation, and they really went into detail about their workload and what it takes behind the scenes. And it is, it's impressive, the amount of work in dot nis and crossing t's that go into that. And so to hit all the benchmarks is significant.
Yeah, it's impressive, and they deserve a lot of credit. Our staff are amazing in keeping up with, because, I mean, I talked about changes from the head department of health. There are changes from ODE as well as federal guidelines that we follow for IDEA. And our staff, you know, we work to make sure that they're up to speed. But it's a lot that they have to do to meet timelines and to do the work to support students to meet these indicators. So it is huge kudos to our entire special education staff district-wide that we've met all these indicators.
That brings us to board member comments. Chris?
Mark, where are the items tonight that are we pressing the COVID mask?
Well, it automatically expired. So unless someone made a motion to extend it, it'll just fall off at, at the end of today.
Okay, okay, so we don't have to take board action here tonight?
No.
Okay. So in other words, you can take your masks off. That's, that's it for me.
Okay. Jim?
I just want to thank Mr. Kelly and Mr. Trentman for bringing Trevor in. I've seen Trevor out on the job, the guy, he does a great job. And that's kind of what I wanted to bring, like, once a month, Butler Tech classes and kids in here just to show everybody in our district what's out there. Because there is a lot of options for kids at Butler Tech. And let alone the classes at Corrine and Northwest, you know, there's four other campuses that, that they can go to. And it just, it's pretty exciting watching these guys and seeing how passionate Trevor, just one example of, of these kids that they really got a passion for what they want to do. But I just want to thank them for coming, and we'll have another group come in next month.
Great. Thank you. You're cool?
Well, congratulations to all the students from Butler Tech. Donnie and his wife Susan have touched many lives in this district, my family's included. So we're just very thankful to have them. And Trevor, just awesome to see a student coming forward from where he was in the freshman year to now he's leading, so. Also Jen and Jeanette for speaking and bringing information to us. I'm thankful personally that the masks are no longer. And since we didn't take a vote, I didn't have to give Chris a spiel about how he's not wearing one, even though he voted yes for it, so thank you.
First, I want to shout out to the Special Education Department. These are the things that go on behind the scenes that I don't know our community really understands unless they have a child that's in the middle of it and knows what all goes into that. You know, amidst all of this madness of COVID, and, you know, there's basically two very distinct sides of where people are on different things. Listening to Nicole read her three-page accolades to students, hearing what we're doing in special education, it's still getting done. Like, our teachers are teaching, our kids are learning, and they're performing and excelling. And I think about Trevor being a leader of everything that's the most important in a world that has just kind of gone amok, where you have kids that are leading other kids into good decisions and career paths, and so that's why I do this. I think, I think it's great, and there's not a meeting goes by that I don't learn about something that we're doing in the district that is just spectacular. And that's all I have. With that, we will adjourn the meeting. Need a motion in a second, please?
Some of it. Second.
Motion in a second. Great, we're all in agreement. Meeting is over.
Okay.